All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session has been held on Monday, June 1st, 2015 at four o'clock PM in the fifth floor conference room for a meeting of the committee of hope to discuss the capital maintenance improvement plan and the community development block grant. Roll call. Philbrook?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Walker, Townsend, McKernan?
Here.
Mugia?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Holland?
Here. We have a little bit of a change of plan. We've had a request for an executive session regarding labor negotiations for twenty minutes in the conference room next door. If I can have a motion for twenty minutes for labor negotiations?
So move?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session for twenty minutes.
(laughing) I could've left it empty over there.
All right, I'm going to reconvene the meeting from executive session. I would turn the, tonight's subject is the CMIP discussion and I would turn this over to Mr. Bach to direct the leading of the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Tonight, as we set out, as we've done every year, we move through and start having conversations about our big projects that are in our five-year plan. And we did a little bit of evolution on this program last year as we started to, we went through our budget process, spent the time working through what projects were important from a community perspective. And then we moved some of them into the fall that we had during standing committee so that would enable us the opportunity to come back in, reevaluate those who were on schedule for 2015, I'm thinking of last year, and then look ahead as to what we're, what we should be projecting to come forward for the year 16 on. We did that last year to give our staff a good idea where our priorities were. And that's where we worked on with this today. As we sat down from a staff perspective, we've done some reevaluation of those projects that are coming. From many aspects, the projects that are in '15 are lined out, how they're ready to go. Our public works staff has had to go through, they do some tweaking to that and then we look at what we're doing in '16 and then we start looking ahead on to '17, '18, '19. So that's kind of our, our global overview. I'm going to turn this over to Debbie Johnson now, she's going to take us through a little bit more overview of where we are from a CMIP perspective. And then we're going to kind of go through a few more of the projects and lay out where we're at. So with that, I'll turn this over to Debbie and let you take us from here.
Thank you, Doug. I thought I would just start out with, with just an overview of the CMIP process. I think most of the commissioners here have seen this information before, but we thought we would just, since we're starting out the process this year, we would go ahead and just quickly review what's in the CMIP and then go over the process of how we get items into the CMIP. So, as I said, the CMIP is a five-year plan of capital project improvements and equipment needs. We actually have, if you look at the CMIP spreadsheet, there's six years. We look at the current year that we're amending and then we have five future years also listed. Improvements can be construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation or maintenance of a capital asset. Equipment needs can be replacement, upgrades or purchasing new equipment. All the capital projects and equipment are financed either as pay-as-you-go, which means we would pay using available cash, or we would debt finance. Equipment is usually leased anywhere from three to 10 years and projects are using geo-bond financing and it's usually 15 to 20 years. Capital equipment includes all of our fleet vehicles, that would be police cars, ambulances, dump trucks, could be large equipment, tractors and mowers, snowplows, sweepers. It can also include technology equipment, computers and software upgrades. On the project side, it includes all public buildings, that would be any UG-owned building, city hall, the courthouse, fire stations, police stations. It could be interior, exterior renovations as well as roof repairs, windows, elevator repairs, anything like that. Infrastructure would be street resurfacing, curb and sidewalk improvements, bridges, sanitary and stormwater improvements, parking lots. Parks and recreation would include shelters, playgrounds, any improvements related to the recreation centers and traffic control, which could be lights, speed bumps and pavement marking. The process for including an item in the CMIP, CMIP requests are submitted to the depart, from the departments to the finance department as well as public works also gets requests. As Doug stated, we also have the standing committee that we have brought projects back. If you recall in the fall last year when we approved the budget, we had a placeholder for marked projects. And then once those projects were awarded, Bill Heatherman came back to the group with the projects that had been awarded. So on that is our plan going forward to come back and review upcoming projects for the next year. Then we have an administrative review where we go through and look, review all the projects and equipment that have been submitted. And then now we are at the meeting, the committee of the whole, where we are presenting the projects and the projects to you for review. Once they're finalized, the projects and equipment list are submitted with the operating budget to the commission for approval during the budget process. I will just say tonight's meeting, you will get information, we're only looking at cash and debt-funded projects tonight. The next couple slides, I just have some graphs with some financial information related to capital. This one just shows our, a graph of the cash budget that we've had over the past several years. We've also shown, the blue line represents the budget for project, capital projects and equipment and the red line indicates the actual amount that was spent for those. The green line indicates the debt budget that was approved for debt-funded projects. I did just want to note one thing. If you look at, see if I can get this to work. Right here in 2009, you will see that when the recession started, we kind of dipped down on our cash projects, but then you also notice that as that happened and our project love, our cash budget went down and kind of stayed down low, our debt projects went up because we
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to reconvene the meeting from executive session. I would turn the, tonight's subject is the CMIP discussion. And I would turn this over to Mr. Bach to direct the leading of the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Tonight, as we set out, as we've done every year, we move through and start having conversations about our big projects that are in our five-year plan. And we did a little bit of evolution on this program last year as we started to, we went through our budget process, spent the time working through what projects were important from a community perspective. And then we moved some of them into the fall that we had during standing committee. So that would enable us the opportunity to come back in, reevaluate those who were on schedule for 2015, I'm thinking of last year, and then look ahead as to what we're, what we should be projecting to come forward for the year 16 on. We did that last year to give our staff a good idea where our priorities were. And that's where we worked on with this today. As we sat down from a staff perspective, we've done some reevaluation of those projects that are coming. From many aspects, the projects that are in 15 are lined out, how they're ready to go. Our Public Works staff has had to go through, they do some tweaking to that, and then we look at what we're doing in 16, and then we start looking ahead on to 17, 18, 19. So that's kind of our, our global overview. I'm going to turn this over to Debbie Johnson now. She's going to take us through a little bit more overview of where we are from a CMIP perspective. And then we're going to kind of go through a few more of the projects and lay out where we're at. So with that, I'll turn this over to Debbie and let you take us from here.
Thank you, Doug. I thought I would just start out with, with just an overview of the CMIP process. I think most of the commissioners here have seen this information before, but we thought we would just, since we're starting out the process this year, we would go ahead and just quickly review what's in the CMIP and then go over the process of how we get items into the CMIP. So, as I said, the CMIP is a five-year plan of capital project improvements and equipment needs. We actually have, if you look at the CMIP spreadsheet, there's six years. We look at the current year that we're amending, and then we have five future years also listed. Improvements can be construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or maintenance of a capital asset. Equipment needs can be replacement, upgrades, or purchasing new equipment. All the capital projects and equipment are financed either as pay-as-you-go, which means we would pay using available cash, or we would debt finance. Equipment is usually leased anywhere from three to 10 years, and projects are using GO bond financing, and it's usually 15 to 20 years. Capital equipment includes all of our fleet vehicles. That would be police cars, ambulances, dump trucks, could be large equipment, tractors and mowers, snowplows, sweepers. It can also include technology equipment, computers, and software upgrades. On the project side, it includes all public buildings. That would be any UG-owned building, City Hall to courthouse, fire stations, police stations. It could be interior, exterior renovations, as well as roof repairs, windows, elevator repairs, anything like that. Infrastructure would be street resurfacing, curb and sidewalk improvements, bridges, sanitary and stormwater improvements, parking lots. Parks and Recreation would include shelters, playgrounds, any improvements related to the recreation centers, and traffic control, which could be lights, speed bumps, and pavement marking. The process for including an item in the CMIP, CMIP requests are submitted to the depart, from the departments to the Finance Department, as well as Public Works also gets requests. As Doug stated, we also have the Standing Committee that we have brought projects back. If you recall, in the fall, last year when we approved the budget, we had a placeholder for marked projects. And then, once those projects were awarded, Bill Heatherman came back to the group with the projects that had been awarded. So on that is our plan going forward, to come back and review upcoming projects for the next year. Then we have an administrative review, where we go through and look, review all the projects and equipment that have been submitted. And then now we are at the meeting, the Committee of the Whole, where we are presenting this, the projects and the projects to you for review. Once they're finalized, the projects and equipment list are submitted with the operating budget to the Commission for Approval during the budget process. I will just say, tonight's meeting, you will get information, we're only looking at cash and debt-funded projects tonight. The next couple slides, I just have some graphs with some financial information related to capital. This one just shows our, a graph of the cash budget that we've had over the past several years. We've also shown, the blue line represents the budget for project, capital projects and equipment, and the red line indicates the actual amount that was spent for those. The green line indicates the debt budget that was approved for debt-funded projects. I did just want to note one thing. If you look at, let's see if I can get this to work. Right here in 2009, you will see that when the recession started, we kind of dipped down on our cash projects, but then you also notice that as that happened, and our project love, our cash budget went down and kind of stayed down low, our debt projects went up because we started moving more of our cash-financed projects to debt to get the, you know, as we were balancing the budget. So that's why you see that incline there. Now we have, then we did start to come down as things leveled out in the outer years. This just shows capital as a percentage of our entire budget. The total budget for the Unified Government was 295 million, and you will see over here that the cash-funded projects and equipment represent 6% of our entire budget. This next slide just shows the capital budget broken out by fund. This, the, the total, the 6% is now, shows how it was broken out. And you can see that sewer, the Sewer System Fund has 40% of the entire capital budget. They have a lot of projects related to their federal mandate with the EPA, and their, their capital has continued to grow over the last several years. This is a graph we've shown several times. This one shows our debt service expenditures. We've kind of broken it out according to revenue source up there. We've got GEO, TIF, and other funds. The TIF and other fund, the other funds represent the enterprise funds. So, and those funds pay for their own debt. Even though they're issued as GEO, they do, they do make the payments on that debt. So the top line represents all the general obligation debt. The graph that's shown below is only related to that top line, the GEO debt, and that's why it's highlighted. And you can see that in this graph, we've got this $20 million expenditure target here. That's a target that we've kind of set for several years, and it was related to the current mill levy and other revenues that we were taking in. This was a target that we had used to set where we wanted our debt service payments to be. As you can see that in the outer years, we do start to creep up. I have built in some additional budget for future, future bond issues that we would have, that we currently don't have, but I have built those into the outer years. And you can see that in 2017, we do start to creep up above that $20 million target. Now, we probably will have some future refunding options that may get us back down below that target, as well as some future revenue streams to apply toward this debt. And with that, we can start, we can get into the detail of the capital projects. Reggie's going to pass out spreadsheets for the debt and cash projects. And while he's doing that, I'm just going to go over a key that we've included that just indicates what the different markings on the spreadsheets are.
Can we send this out electronic? If you don't want the hard copy, just let him know when he comes around. Sorry.
As we go through the, the document, if you see any amounts that are underlined, that indicates that there's either been an increase or a decrease from what was previously approved in the budget, or that was in the, in the CMIP. Most of those markings occur in the 2015 amended and 2016 columns. A box indicates a new item that was submitted that was not previously in the CMIP. And the dotted line indicates that the amount either moved from one year to the next, or you moved from a different funding source. We've also got little indications. If something's funded both out of the city and county, we've tried to note that using plus CI to indicate that there's city money, as well as county money in there, and a future, and a couple other funds. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Heatherman, County Engineer, to go over some of the highlights on the, we're going to start with the debt projects.
Thank you, Debbie. So with regards to the transportation and related projects, the debt-financed spreadsheet is the key. And as Debbie indicated, the, the handout here gives you an idea for either increase or decrease amounts, new items, change in year or funding source, the legend of how we make adjustments. And I'd be glad to answer any specific questions you have, but before we did that, we just wanted to give maybe some broader themes that we hoped would help you kind of picture what the, the bigger story is with the budgeting. So one of the main constraints in our budgeting is what Debbie showed, the, the need to maintain a target level of debt service over time. And what that results in is a cap or a, or at least a controlled approach to each year of total debt projects funded through the General Fund. And for transportation projects, that is the main source of funding, is the General Fund. Our enterprise funds in Public Works, the Storm Sewer Utility and the Sanitary Sewer Enterprise Fund have their own separate funding source, and they obviously have controls as to how much indebtedness they can have. But the transportation projects in particular are the ones that you see being controlled by that chart. When we work out the other types of projects, what we really have in here is the top three types of transportation projects, which is on page one, and the top of page two, if you add your streets, bridge, and traffic together. Those really average out about 13 and a half million over this five, six-year period. 2016 is a very controlled year that adds up, those three line items add up to about 12 million and-
You're on the debt sheet.
On the debt sheet, yeah. If you have your debt sheet handy. If, if you were to look at the first three purple lines and add them together, you would see that those hold relatively controlled and a steady progression, 12 million this in 2016, and then increasing up to about 14. But it really averages about 13 and a half. And, you know, some year we may have a bridge project that's expensive, some year we may have something that gets categorized as traffic engineering that's expensive, such as the Leavenworth Road intersections coming up this year. But those usually balance out, and we try to hold a relatively level funding there. We also try to hold some ratio, or at least a balance between our core maintenance projects and those other projects that are either rehabilitation or reconstruction. There's a little bit different discretion. Sometimes our core maintenance projects come up as emergencies, and other times, like with our street resurfacing, we just know that we need to maintain a steady level of effort, that if we swing too wildly on that, that will get things out of cycle. We don't have an exact number, but it's, it seems to be about 50/50 over time in terms of those things that get categorized as strict maintenance versus the others. I wanted to draw your attention to the bottom of page one. One of the stories of 2015 and 16 is really how successful we were in getting Mid-America Regional Council grant-funded projects, and, and we've talked about those over this last year. But if you see the, the big cluster of boxes in the 2015 amended budget at the bottom of page one, what those all primarily are is grant-funded projects, and you see the plus G at the end. Most of those, all of those projects are the ones that we talked with the Public Works Standing Committee and you all about last year. And this is really the first time you see them fully shown in the regular budget. But these were all approved in Finance last year. And that, for example, is our Safe Routes to School projects. That's our Leavenworth Road, 63rd to 38th, our Central Avenue and 18th Street project, the 10th and 12th bike route from Metropolitan to Quandero, the improvements on Route 107. And what you'll see below, at third line from the bottom, is we know that every two years, we're going to have a chance to compete for these funds. And so we have built in a placeholder because next year's competition will be the year, will be competition for projects that would have a construction in 2019 or 2020. So that's built in so that we don't have a crisis when we win the projects, and then suddenly all the expectations get upended. We, we're trying to have that built into the budget. And these are reasonable expectations for us being successful. And just so you see the other half of it, what you see on page one is the local funding needed to support our share of these debt funds. But if you flip back to page six in this packet, and I'll give you just a second to get back there. If you flip back to page six, those are the grant, that's the actual expected amount to be, to be received through grants of all types of projects. And in the middle there, you can see a nice big long list of those same transportation projects that, that we've been successful with. Couple other pieces to the story. If you go back to page one, over time, we are steadily increasing our proposed amounts of money to spend on resurfacing projects. I know that in our individual conversations each year, when we're talking about the resurfacing program, and in phone calls and emails I get all through the year, the importance of maintaining the condition of our streets is very important to you as it is to us. And so we're trying to continue to show a commitment to that. You also see some pretty big numbers there for our unfunded federal mandate with regards to ADA wheelchair ramps, and we've done enough of those now that I think you can see the kind of benefit they provide in the neighborhoods once we get to those. We have a lot left to go, and we have to maintain our focus. We have added a project that we've been watching the condition of the concrete at State Avenue near Village West, and it's, it's time. So we have made the adjustments necessary to get that one fit into 2016. The last thing I'll point out, and this is, this is to what Debbie had mentioned, every year, there are many new requests for new projects and priorities. And, and we have been working for the last couple of years to continue to make a better process so that you all as commissioners have the information you need to make decisions, and you can do it in an orderly fashion. So what, what you will see on the bottom of page one, second line from the bottom, you see a line item called residential collector reconstruction. And what that really is, is your placeholder for the next discretionary project, not driven by maintenance necessarily, unless it turns out that we have something so big that it hits us on the maintenance end. And under the budget constraints that we have right now, we have, you know, anticipated that there might be around $2 million that could be allocated to some one or two new projects that may come up. And then if you flip to, towards the back of your sheet, to what we're calling the unfunded projects list on page seven, you will see a, a select number of those projects that has, that have come up in some kind of public forum or discussion. This is just the beginning of the list, if you will. And when we come and visit with the Public Works Standing Committee in the fall, it will be with the idea of accepting additional proposals to add to that list, and asking you all for your assistance in getting priorities to that list. We were not proposing to necessarily add any of these in this budget round because really the first opportunity comes later, unless you all as a commission decide amongst yourself that that's what you would like to see happen. And, and that's the way we have it set up to be able to work with you and kind of figure out where the constraints and what adjustments might need to happen, if in fact that's the request that's made. This is your budget. Our job is to give you good information and hopefully be able to carry through on those projects in a, in a manner that you all expect once we get those decisions made. And with that, I guess we would stand for any questions you might have on the transportation part of the budget, and then Mike will start taking you through the buildings and other pieces.
I don't, I don't have a question on that, but I do note that on the unfunded projects you've listed is the ADA playground, or, or the playground that is not, not exclusively, not handicap accessible, but is designed and built for the handicapped that I have, that I intend to initiate and pursue. And I need to, whatever process, I need to have that elevated to at least the point where we get strategy money, or planning money, some kind of allocation so our Parks Director can use that as a lever to get matching funds, which I am given to understand by him from his experience in Independence, is widely available, but not from ground zero. You have to be able to put up some dollars. Now, I don't know what number I'm talking about, but it is certainly one I intend to pursue.
Commissioner, based on our earlier discussions, that's why we placed that project within the list on the unfunded part. And according to Jeremy, the Parks Director, that number would, includes the amount necessary for the preliminary design, so-
Is it 450?
Yes.
All right.
It was anticipated that the actual construction cost of that would be around 400, and that the $50,000 was the design part of it.
I did not anticipate this being a, a project that we would be able to do within a very short period, but I did expect it to be able to be completed over a two-year period. Commissioner Murgia?
Thanks, Hal. So I have quite a few questions, but I'm going to ask you on some of these just to provide it in writing to me. I don't need it right now. It would take too much time. So, number on the first page, numbers one, two, three, and five, I'm really doing this more for the benefit of the new commissioners. I never knew the difference between those before. If you could define those and maybe send them to all of us, because there is a difference. I had to learn that the hard way. You see what I'm saying? Page one.
Yeah, I do. I understand.
And there is a difference, which you'll see. So, first of all, let me also say fantastic job on this, Doug. If this is you, this is great. I particularly appreciate the, the want list on the backside. Commissioner Markley's been saying for years, you know, we need a list that we can put things on, so we can keep track, and then if it never comes to the front, then, you know, the commission is responsible for that. But not having a list, it's hard for us always to remember what people have brought to us. So that's, this is great and easy to follow. So just a quick question about, I'll use Safe Routes as an example, Bill. You have Safe Routes, and you list the schools that you're doing on number 11 and 12 on page one, you guys. So when you, I know those have grants. So does this amount that we have allocated for 2016, for example, we'll just use the 270,000, does that include the grant money?
So what you see, Commissioner, on page one, is the local funds necessary to match or fulfill our non-reimbursed expenses on the grant. So this is the local funds, and then on that page six is the grant, and when you add those together, you get the total amount available for the project.
Okay, and that's consistent?
Yes, that's how we've, we've done it.
Okay. And then, I love this, on page two. Oh, I thought they were numbered. Sorry, guys, that's probably why you're confused. Well, it's the one, two, third, it says facilities projects, and it talks about animal control facility expansion. I love that you're saying that's projected for 2016 at $100,000.
I think Mike will address that.
Yes, that is included, that was already in the budget. And part of that came out of lease.
Okay. So just so this correlates, with a facility expansion, I'm assuming when we get the, the budget where we pay people, you will see an increase in the number of animal control employees, because now we have more space to take care of. No? They just have to do more.
I think some of that's still subject to prioritizing where we're going with that. You know, and there's still some study that needs to be fit to this, that if we're putting animal control, I mean, we had, we had a push that we would be doing a complete new animal control shelter that got threw out there too, you know, which is a whole different frame of project which would come in. But if the emphasis from the committee that's working this and comes back is that this has expanded space, and we're targeting that toward adoption space, or is it holding space? And I, I can't say that I have a clear defined priority as to what we're doing yet on that. I think there's still a committee recommendation that comes back that we'll evaluate, and then we bring back to the governing body. But the emphasis of this $100,000 has been there for a while, and we have allowed it to work up. And I haven't pushed it out this year because we did put a lot of emphasis toward animal control in the last year, so left that as a priority.
So just for purposes of this meeting, we can have that discussion later. I just wanted to make sure that when I'm looking at a CMIP budget and I see money for bricks and mortar, especially expansions or additions, that we also be thinking that that expansion, I don't think we can ask our people to do more than what they're currently doing. So anything we would consider for expansion, I would expect to see increase in positions.
Can I say something along that line, since we're on animal control? Thank you, Ann, I appreciate that. Now, that particular amount has not been earmarked- Now, that particular amount has not been earmarked as exactly how we would ask the commission to spend the money, because we do not know the best way yet. That's number one. Number two is, we do know that increased personnel, number one in our opinion, is the first thing, okay? And I'm, I'm speaking for my committee, so, and you're welcome to, you know, call anybody on the committee and talk to them, or come to the next meeting. But we know increased personnel make a big difference, and so that's part of, I'm sure, what the police department is dealing with because that budget, that part, the increase is under their budget, okay?
Okay. So, to finish on my questions, page four, top item, Dedicated Sales Tax Fund, a sort of a pleasant surprise. Are you telling us that we're going to continue the CNIP program? Is that telling us for '15 and '16? I thought when we talked about this before, Lou didn't think we had that much money in there. Did he find some?
Commissioner, the page four only shows the 2015 as the last of the two rounds of CNIP funding.
Oh.
Sorry.
I need glasses, apparently. Okay, so 2015, this year is the last of that. So, that program, for clarity, for everyone's clarity, is over.
Yes.
Sorry, guys. Hey, what's that? So, 2015, this is the last year, right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, and then, oh, and you've asked, answered the grant question, that's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum?
Just to make sure I understand, and Commissioner Murgia, I think, kind of asked a better version of my question. On page one, the grant-funded projects, and this is the piece that when we say debt finance, meaning we didn't spend cash, we borrowed, is that, am I right?
Yes. Yeah, what you see, when you see these numbers, is the total amount. So, like, take the first project, 2015, neighborhood street resurfacing, we went into debt and did $1.9 million. Now, we're more specific when we go through and do the actual debt financing. We know when those come around where those project areas are, but we'll pull out $1.9 million that goes into debt specifically for these purposes, and that's what we total out, and then we, and we're going to pay for that $1.9 million over years, but that's how much is allocated from this year's debt to that.
Is there a rhyme or reason to, when a grant opportunity comes up, whether to debt finance it or pay cash? Is it just kind of a case by case?
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I would say most of the grant opportunities come in the transportation realm, and at least at the present time, the financing of major transportation projects is almost all debt. The amount of cash that's been left available to provide match is very, very small.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's well said. I mean, really, when you saw that pie, 6% for cash is pretty low. It would be preferred when we're taking out little projects, I say little, but a $250,000 project that we'd be paying cash. We just have not been in that position for long.
Also, I'd like to ask the question, and maybe it's Lou or Doug. It follows up with Commissioner Murgia's question about the termination of the CNIP program. Has that decision been made by a previous commission that we'd only do it for four years, or did we, did we just fund it for four years and the funding has run out? I mean, I think it's a great program, and I think that it gives the commissioners some ability to get things done in their district. But if I understand correctly, in order to come up with another $2 million for the next budget year, or would it be the next budget year or the next two budget years?
Well, it'd be multiple years, but I think.
For multiple years, we would have to agree to debt finance that. Is that correct? What do you want to add?
Well, Debbie, you could probably speak to the, how that, why don't you speak to how the Dedicated Financing Fund works and the revenue source that we have coming in for that over the next few years, and then how we allocate that.
Okay. We issued, we issued a bond for, let's just look at the 2015. We issued a bond for the 2015, the $2 million, and we are, we have set that to pay back over a four-year term. So, it, we will finish paying for the 2015 amount in 2019. We set it up, the Dedicated Sales Tax expires in 2020. So, we have, currently, we have a revenue source coming up through, I guess, June of 2020. And so, we've set these payments on the CNIP projects to pay off during that time.
So, it's not that you've made a decision not to do it anymore, but each year, from this year through 2019, you've already allocated $600,000 a year.
Right.
For that purpose. So, of the amount of revenue that comes in, that's already gone. So, when we start to divide that fund up, a third, a third, a third between police, fire, and public works, we've taken, you take big chunks away from it, and you could, you'd have to take a bigger chunk, I guess, to get it all paid off by 2019 or 2020 if you wanted to do another version of it. You would have no cash available probably for any of those out years because you'd probably be spending it all toward debt service, and that, and that was the thought on it before.
And I'll just echo the, the original proposal of CNIP specifically talked about a one-time, $4 million total allocation, split into two different rounds, and financed over that sales tax period. That's how it was proposed.
Well, I'm, I'm obviously, even though if we're doing it in cycles, the next year would not be, or the next two years would not be my turn. I like this project, and I'm interested in further discussions at a later date. I don't want to get down in the weeds tonight about it, but of whether we can figure another way to fund that. It allows, it allows commissioners to identify the great, where they think needs are that doesn't always correspond to staff, and that's not good or bad, it's just, it gives two points of view and opportunity to come through. So, it may be, it may be that we won't be able to fund it the way we planned, but I don't want this program to be written off as dead, whatever we call it, whether we call it CNIP or some other funding by debt financing for commissioner discretionary projects. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Walters?
So, I have some questions. We're on page one through three, right, with your presentation, Bill?
Yes, sir.
So, just, could you elaborate on, on the first page? You mentioned the ADA pedestrian handicap ramps, and we're going from $100,000 a year to $800,000 a year. Could you explain why we're doing that, or what the great increase is for?
That, so the line item, it's the fourth from the top, Neighborhood ADA Pedestrian Handicap Ramp. That is the funding source intended to get us in compliance with our 10-year consent decree with the Department of Justice that we signed in 2010. And if I recall right, the total amount we estimated at the outset of that was on the order of $15 to $16 million to completely do all the ADA ramps that we were required to do. In the first couple of years, it was felt that trying to hit that average would just be logistically too much for us to try to execute. So, when we started that program, we started at half a million a year, and I think originally we were going to bump up to a million last year. But because of all of the pushing and shoving, if you will, to get all the projects to fit in, we held off that ramping up of the program. Under our consent decree, we are to be done with this whole program by 2019, 2020, and we need to be able to execute at these higher levels. In fact, this may not entirely be enough to totally get everything through, but we figured, let's make the first jump before we worry about the second jump.
So, did we just spend $100,000 in 2015, or?
2015 was an unusual drop. If you went back to 13 and 14 and 15, we'd had half a million. But yes, we did drop down to $100,000 last year because we just had so many competing demands, and that was about the only thing that we had any real discretion and timing on.
So, you don't think it'll be a problem to ramp up to $800,000 next year?
No, we were doing half a million a year. So, we had built our pace and capacity.
Last question on page three, the YMCA facility for $6 million, and I see that as the 2015 budget line item. Are we ready to spend that money?
We're not ready to spend it yet. What we left it there is the potential that if we move forward with that project, we would be able to finance that portion as per where we were earlier assigned for it to go. So, it's sitting there in that placeholder. We'd identify what we would use in the out years when we'd debt it out as casino revenues or some that would go toward, that was the revenue source for it. Unlikely that the project would get dug in and do a whole lot in 2015, but if we wanted to move forward and let it and do the debt, we needed to have it, we needed to keep it in this year's budget. I did contemplate pushing it 2016 for that purpose, but I wanted to maintain the flexibility that if we did that, we could still do it in 15, but if we thought, let's go to 16, we can always carry it over, then amend our budget next year.
Thank you.
Commissioner, are you done?
Yes.
Commissioner Kane?
Well, two things. One, I thought tonight's presentation was so they could show us, and then we'd look at it, and then we'd get into the weeds. I didn't think it was get into the weeds and, you know, tie up a lot of time tonight, not that I care, but I thought that was the purpose of it, that you guys would show it to us, we'd write down our questions, come back as a whole, and ask questions. That's one thing. And the other thing, on the YMCA, what's the deadline on that?
August.
August of what year?
This year.
All right, so at the end of August.
That was the original deadline for the financing, or substantial financing to be in place was two years, and I believe it was in early August of 13 that we said move forth. And it's my expectation that at some point in the next few months, the mayor will make some presentation to us about where we are financially, whether it's just $6 million that we have committed to or whether there are additional contributions to be considered.
And I think that.
Certainly before we complete our budget, Mr. Walters.
Well, and that's my point, because, you know, I'd love to see a why, but, you know, I've got, I got fire stations they can't live in. And to be perfectly honest about it, I'm really disappointed that the pole barn at 123rd and 11 Worth Road is, there's no, we're going to buy a new one, fix a new one, nothing. So, I think we need to take a look at that. I mean, I'm concerned about it, maybe some of the staff isn't, maybe some of the commissioners aren't, but what happened the other day is going to happen in other fire stations, so we need to keep that in mind. And like I said, I don't want to get in the weeds tonight, didn't think we were going to, don't think we should. I just thought this was a presentation to say here's where we're at.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane. Commissioner Walters?
I guess maybe I need a clarification. Are we supposed to ask questions, or are we not supposed to ask questions tonight?
Well, I, I, I thought tonight would not be one where we would get, as we say, down into the weeds in too much detail.
Okay.
We only have till 6 o'clock. Now, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we got, does staff have other general presentation like the cash funded, money, cash project that you want to talk about?
Yes, sir, there's a few more.
I mean, we, we're going to have to have a longer detailed discussion, I know, and we're not going to get enough time tonight, so if there's staff presentation, let's get the big picture and avoid anything we don't have to have discussed tonight, tonight. That would be my take on it. I don't know how the mayor would do it, but that's how I'm going to do it, so.
Well, I think, if I may interject here, I think what, if I can speak a little bit for Commissioner Kane, I think he wasn't saying he minded the questions, he's going to have some of his own questions.
No, I understand.
And there needs to be another forum for us to go into more detail.
I think the big picture, that's a big ticket item, and it was appropriate question, wasn't getting into the weeds, but, you know, just, if there's more ground to cover, we've only got 30 minutes to do it, and so we need to do it.
As long as there's going to be another meeting to talk about this stuff, I'm good.
The mayor calls them, but I, is there any commissioner that does not want to have another meeting on CMIP? Then I would say the mayor needs to be informed, Doug, that we all want to have another meeting on CMIP.
Well, as we discussed, maybe the opportunity next week, as we, we're talking about doing some CDBG next week, but giving this information to you, and if there was a need for follow-up on the projects, that that's a week out, you know, so it gives a good opportunity to come back to this as well.
So, with that, Mayor Protem, we'll push ahead. Going to the other batch, I will just finish with the transportation and engineering side on the cash fund, and then Mike Tobin will touch base on the buildings, logistics, and other project fund sources. So, if you go to the other spreadsheet that was handed out, that has cash project by fund at the top, you know, as you all know, there's lots of individual fund sources, and different departments draw their projects off. For the transportation and engineering programs, the most interesting pages are really page four.
I've just been informed that we go off television at 5:45 for 15 minutes, so let's get your presentation in its best abbreviated form.
Will do, we'll hustle. So, page four, which is the sales tax-supported funds, page five, which has Special Street and Highway Fund, which is the ever-declining gas tax, and then at the bottom is our sewer enterprise fund, and page six, which has our stormwater utility fund. Most of those cash funds are very much day-to-day heavy maintenance. There's not a lot of the discretionary projects listed in there. There's a few odds and ends, and we can answer questions on those later. And with that, I will turn it over to Mike Tobin to talk about kind of the rest of the budget picture.
If I might stay where Bill was for a minute, on the sewer side where he mentioned the cash projects, that's part of what you've seen increasing lately. We've been increasing the sewer system fund revenues by 5% the last few years. That's all due to the federal mandates for the CSO and the IOCP program. The money that you see on page five, those are maintenance programs or studies and engineering fees that go along with that program and that keep us in compliance until late next year when we have to go and make our final presentation and come to a final consent decree with the EPA. On the stormwater utility, you know, that's where we collect.
Mike, I just clarify, you said 5%. We've been doing 7%, so this project, contemplate our continued 7% increase in that budget each year.
I'm sorry, you're correct. On the stormwater utility, that's where we collect a user fee, and those funds go in there, and the projects come out of that, and as a matter of fact, will be coming to the next Public Works Standing Committee regarding stormwater to present to that committee. If I could go back for a minute, I know that there's always going to be questions on sewers, but I guess we'll come back to those at a later time. I'd like to get through the building part because if you look at the amount of money that's allocated to the repairs and maintenance of our buildings, which is under buildings and logistics, some of it's under fire and police. In the debt section, which was that first handout that we went through, you'll notice on page two, there are some facilities projects, which is not a large amount of money. The large amount of money for our facility projects is back in the unfunded categories, and those amounts are significant. As you will see as you go through it, we've neglected these facilities for years, and it's catching up with us. Not to beat a dead horse, but that's something that we, that needs to be addressed. We're commissioning a master plan for the building across the street, which is our flagship building, I guess you would call it, the county courthouse, which is on historical register. register. It is my hope, sincere hope, of staff and Don Jones, who's present tonight, our Facilities Director, the strategic planning that will take place in the fall. We would like to come forward and present more on the buildings to you at that time to keep it at a high level, but also to bring it to the forefront. I know what I'm saying is probably going to generate a lot more questions, but I'm moving fast, as Commissioner Walker directed me.
Yeah.
There are, let me see here. There are buildings, also on the cash side, you will see there's no cash, I don't believe, or very little cash, on the, out of the County General Fund. And that is also a gaping hole in, in how we approach the building repairs. The City General Fund has more money than the County General Fund, and that leads to a disparity in some of the payments. I would let Lou or Doug speak more to that. But you can see the amounts are very small that we deal with in there. At this time, I'm ready to stop for questions. If anybody has any.
I'll have plenty of them later on that.
Well, certainly, I, I don't want anybody to feel, we've got 10 minutes. If you have a question that can be answered in a, not in the minutia of a particular project perhaps, but in a big-picture way, please, feel free to ask. Okay? I guess there's no, no more questions.
I might.
Mr. Johnson?
And this may be for Doug or whoever the case may be. How do we interpret the priority positions that are next to each one of these projects? So I, you know, is it, number one, I mean, does that mean, well, I guess it makes sense then, it's just, that's the priority in which it's used, or it's going to be addressed, rather.
I can sort of field that one.
Certainly.
So, when I first came along, there was no such thing as a priority position, and we just had this big budget, so then we needed to cut something. Commissioners didn't have any idea of what staff thought was, should be first on the list, and what staff thought should be last on the list. So we asked staff to start sort of identifying what was the required expenditure and what was, you know, obviously, staff wants to have them all, and we respect that, we understand that. But we did come to a point where we had to start to juggle some things, and it was nice to have staff's input put on the front end as to what was most important versus least important. So that's where those numbers came from.
And those, not to interrupt you, but those numbers were put there by staff for our approval, I assume.
Yes. And one thing that you'll see is you look at, say, for instance, when the police budget comes to us, there'll be a whole bunch of things that say one, and that's because they're things we're making payments on, so we can't not pay them. So you'll see, sometimes you'll see multiple ones, and that, that's why that happens as
So I'd just add one request to the list. I think this is great. As I said, I mean that, I think it's fabulous. And Commissioner Johnson, just so you know, if there's a particular thing that you went on the list, I mean, my intention was, I think Commissioner Markley's, was that you could add it to the list. Whether it gets funded or not would be a commission decision. The only thing I'd ask is if you guys don't mind, I know we can't go back in time, but can you put the year that these items were added on the list? Because my anticipation is going to be that the list is going to grow. And I want to know when things were on there in 2014, when things were added in 2015. It does sort of put some order to things. You know, so if we have, for example, a fire station out west that stays on the list for 20 years, and other things are surpassing it and getting funded, people just need clarity that apparently the commission doesn't view that as a top priority. There just needs to be a very transparent way to see that.
All right. Yes.
It is. And I want to make clear, too, on one thing, I think a little bit to follow up on Commissioner Markley's comment. You'll, you'll see the priorities, like you can see that under Fire and Police, where they come through, and you see a lot of the ones there. Equipment, too, last year, I didn't, we didn't do commit, committee the whole for equipment. I think we'd found previously that you all said, hey, we know you need the equipment, you get so much money, go do your own priorities. So you'll get that, but I mean, it's, we're not going to sit down and go through it and committee the whole. So unless there's a change in that philosophy, I'm not planning on bringing equipment back from that perspective. We have a lot of needs, and we need to figure out where to, where to allocate that. And I do, I do want to clarify, too, on the, the fire ones, so many of them are unfunded. We've intentionally put those in the back, waiting on our study, this to be done. I believe the direction that I've been given, and I believe it's correctly so, that we wait to get the priorities of which ones are the highest priorities and where we go, because we have so many buildings that need attention now, but we don't want to go in and spend a million dollars on something that we're saying, well, we should do away with that station, and we should can build one over here, or something like that for, because half of them need major infrastructure.
No disrespect, but aid is terrible. And we haven't done anything in 10 years, and I've complained about the whole 10 years.
Yeah. It is.
I mean, I think there's, there are plenty of opportunities to spend money here for capital improvements. I tend to agree with Commissioner Kane about firehouses. That particular part of the community pays an enormous amount of tax into the coffers of the city that is then redistributed. When we annexed that area, that was the township fire station. It was inadequate for a township, let alone a city that has expanded and grown out there. I'm sure there are many fire stations that are in need of improvement, but the people out in the western part of the community deserve a, a fire station that is up to today's standards. It's, it's, I, I guess the fortunate thing is, I don't know about many fires out there. I haven't heard about many fires. I couldn't tell you how many have been out there, but one day, because of that station, there's going to be a catastrophe, because we have done nothing to make that a better, better station. Hopefully, this, I guess, the study will identify the appropriate location that fire stations go throughout the community, and we can decide where we need to fund them. But we, we do definitely need a long-range strategy for fire station improvement that is just not hit and miss. Whichever squeaks the loudest gets, gets oiled. That's my opinion, anyway, so. Anybody have anything else? Okay, that being the case, I think we'll adjourn this session of the meeting. I guess we reconvene at 6:00 for the Neighborhood and Community Development Standing Committee. Thank you all.